Happy Tuesday, everyone. Oh, my goodness. Let me tell you, I am excited that we are back on Tuesday. We are going to have a great conversation tonight, and we have a special guest today that we're so excited to have so we can talk about, what? Our favorite topic, school boards. I hope you're having a wonderful day. I hope you had a wonderful three-day weekend. Well, teachers and the teaching field. Oh, actually, no. Monday was a holiday, so most people had a three-day weekend, right? Darlene, did you have a three-day weekend? You're on mute, but I always have a three-day weekend.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you so much for joining us tonight, Darlene. And listen, you could have been anywhere you wanted to be tonight. There is a special school board meeting happening today on Tuesday, which normally, um, we don't typically have any school board meetings that, you know, I try to plan around those, but our Tuesday nights were definitely planned around school board meetings. But hey, you'll definitely be able to come back and re-watch our Facebook Live tonight. Just in case you don't know who I am, I've seen a couple of new people join our Facebook. We had a couple of new people join our Zoom, so I'm really excited about the community engagement. My name is Camila Bywaters. I'm currently a licensed special education teacher. Um, I'm working now as a high school teacher. So, so cool. Such a cool job. And I'm also completing my dissertation, so you will not see me in the community until I'm done with my dissertation, y'all. I have been taking a little bit too long, so I have to take a break. After my dissertation is done this summer, I will be out getting on people's nerves and doing what we do best. So, a big shout out to Tracy. She's on the call, so if you want to introduce yourself, Tracy, you can. And then, if anybody else on the call wants to introduce themselves, you can as well. Darlene, you can do that if you would like. Um, thank you so much for taking the time to join us today. We're going to have a great conversation. And the hope is that you will take the information that you learn, um, do your own research, and really begin to engage more in school boards locally, also across the United States. And then you know that we'll also be focusing in on politics globally and locally. So, I don't know if Tracy's ready to introduce herself, but if not, we'll just move on to anybody else who wanted to. And then we'll get into, um, having our conversation and introduction of our guest, Dr. Carrie Sampson. Tracy? Okay, anyone else?
I'll talk.
Go ahead, Darlene.
Okay, my name's Darlene Anderson, and originally from Sacramento, California, where I was really involved in public education. As I got to chair the district advisory committee for Title I, I got to sit on the board for, um, special education. And, uh, you know, there are all kinds of ways to just participate. I participated at all the school site councils. But here in Nevada, it's just a little different, and they make it difficult for the community to come in and join. And so I find that very frustrating. And when we don't talk about the ability of our children to benefit from mandatory services, that's our conversation because we're not making it. Even though a few people are making it because we have some magnet programs, we have all of the programs that should be implemented, but we're not there. And so we need to figure out how we hold them accountable for getting our foot in the door in 2025. That's why we're here. And so thank you for the invite. And I've been watching you guys for a long time, just making progress. And so I'm happy about that.
And you know what, Darlene? I want to give you a big shout out, too, because you really do do a lot. You're on point with your research. You send me like all the emails, and I want to say thank you for doing that work. Uh, but I know that sometimes it may feel unappreciated, but so I want to say thank you because you attend meetings like, like you're going to church and like it's your full-time job. And some people think that that type of work is unnecessary, but it's absolutely necessary, and that's why you have the wisdom that you have. So, thank you so much for doing the work that you do. Please know that we see you and we read your emails. And even when you text me, I always try to make sure I read it and respond. So, thanks.
It's a lot. And because they're moving right now to, uh, explain the behavioral issues and bullying. Bullying is covered by the federal government. And because, uh, states have a responsibility and obligation to train these children how to communicate effectively. And so, you know, when they have this harbor program, it's just difficult because they're not providing the level of support that the children need to transition and not get moved away from their gifted and talented program. It's almost criminal to lose it at the age of 11. And so we have to do things about that because how do you get a life sentence at the age of 11? How do you ever turn it around? And because we have so many, I mean ASAP, whatever his name is, he just won his case. I was so elated. I mean, because he has a family, he has those two young children, and Rihanna and Rihanna was just.
You didn't brought in the celebrities. You talked about ASAP Rocky?
Yeah, girl, it was just on the news. He's, he's, he's not guilty of anything.
Okay.
They dropped all the charges. But anyways, but I want to get back on to what we have to do because this is 2025. We really have to focus on the data because they will make us look any kind of way if we don't focus on our own data. And so it should be our conversation, how do we get to that point where we hold all of our elected officials accountable to talk about our student achievement in the state of Nevada?
Absolutely. So, thank you for that. And, um, we're going to go ahead and Mr. Rodney, did you want to introduce yourself? And then if there's anybody else, you can as well. And then we'll move on to Dr. Carrie Sampson. You're on mute.
Good evening, everybody. I am Rodney Smith with the gathering, but most importantly, with my homegirl here, Ms. Camila Bywater, supporting her in, in keeping us informed about education. And there is a lot going on, and they are after our children. We are the first line of defense for them, and we need to know the information, like Darlene says, and get to the defending part.
Thank you. And big shout out to Assemblywoman Clara Thomas, who's on the call as well. We appreciate and love and thank you for all of your work that you've done for us in our community. And at this time, let's get started. Did anyone else, before I move on, did anybody else want to introduce themselves or say that you're here? We got the general, we got Assemblywoman, we have Assemblywoman Thomas and Ms. Amy. Thank you for showing up. And then Benjamin, thank you for joining us tonight. Listen, you all, we've been talking about school boards, right? And I think it's so important that we have someone who does this work as a part of their scholarship, focusing in on school boards and has actually written a book about navigating school board politics. So, um, during my campaign trail, um, I received your book, Dr. Carrie Sampson, and I was like, wait, who just sent me this book? I was like literally geeked out. Um, the publisher said that you had asked for them to send me the book, and I was just like, it, it really just touched my heart because just being in the work and having people to, well, first, the rate, the race was off the chain. It was really like, it was a full-time job. I put my blood, sweat, and tears in it. So I was really thankful to receive your book because it was really just speaking to everything that I was going through and what we've been hearing in the news about, um, the politics of school boards and how to navigate governance. So I thought that when I had a conversation with you, I was like, you know what? Let me ask to see if she would be able to come on the Facebook Live because we've been able to really build a community of people in our state who want to learn more about school boards, who families want to be more involved. And we have our work together, um, our group here, um, the work with Levapsey. We've been able to really elevate some of the challenges that we've had and to mobilize more people to be involved. So what I, what I would love for you is to talk a little bit about your bio. Who are you? Where are you from? And talk about some of the work that, some of your scholarship first, so that we can get to know you a little more.
Certainly. Thank you so much for the invitation. Um, I'm really excited to be here, um, of course, with you, Camila. But I also see Rodney, Mr. Rodney, um, who I attended a couple of the gathering, um, meetings back in the day. Um, what, nearly like 15, 20 years ago, I think?
A long time.
As a, as a student at UNLV, and so, and it's really a pleasure to be in this space with you all. Um, I'm an assistant.
You look the same.
Oh, oh, really?
Yes, I could, I could spot you anyplace. I'm sure I've changed quite a bit.
No.
You are that same bright star shining just as much now as you were back then. So, um, I was so happy to know about your book. Uh, you did keep me in on some of the research that you had been doing. So when Sister Camila said that you were going to be on the show, I was like, no matter what, I need to make sure that I'm there because, hey, that's one of my peeps right there.
Yes, you are a pillar in the community. Um, and you definitely look the same as well, for real.
You're very kind, but thank you.
Um, yeah, I moved from Las Vegas to Arizona in 2016 to start a position at Arizona State University as an assistant professor on the tenure track. And now I'm an associate professor, so I received um, a couple of years ago, and it's been now eight years. This is my eighth year at Arizona State University. Yes. Thank you. It's been a journey, let me tell you. A lot of writing, a lot of, uh, research, a lot of publishing, uh, a lot of work, teaching, but it's been good work. Um, and, you know, I'm, I'm excited about this book. Um, I'm an associate professor in our, uh, Teachers College, our education college. I'm in the educational leadership program, and I teach mostly, um, in that program, in our ed policy program with our PhD students. And, um, in our EDD program, so I kind of teach across the board, mostly, um, at the graduate level. And so I'm working with some incredible students, too. We're working on several projects right now about school boards, about school choice policies and vouchers, um, about school board recalls. I mean, there's just so much work to be done. Um, and, yeah, I'm, I'm grateful that I'm able to do it, but really, a lot of it started from my time in Las Vegas. Um, and doing research, I got my PhD in, um, public affairs at UNLV. And while I was doing my PhD, I started working with Dr. Sonia Douglas with her work on school desegregation, the history of school desegregation in Las Vegas. Um, and again, this is, you know, it was close to my heart as somebody, I moved to Las Vegas when I was 13, so I attended KO Canets in middle school, and I attended, uh, Chaparral High School. And so, um, both her and I had this kind of link in, in, um, history in Las Vegas. And so being able to, you know, do that research with her, um, was really meaningful. But one of the things I learned pretty quickly was how powerful the school board was, um, in the school desegregation plan. And so while the, the district was required to desegregate schools in, in West Las Vegas, or the historic West Las Vegas, the, the district, the school board was able, you know, the ones who voted on the plan to desegregate. And so, um, we were able to collect counter-stories from folks in the black community, you know, black educators, black community leaders, um, around what, what that meant for them and what that, you know, what that meant for the community at the time. Um, and one of the things we learned was that the burden of busing, um, was heavily placed on black families and black children. For nearly 20 years, I mean, these black children were bused out of the neighborhood for about 11, I think 11 of the 12 years of their schooling. No, I'm sorry, yeah, 11 of the 13 years, if you include kindergarten. They were able to stay in the district or in their neighborhood for kindergarten and sixth grade. And so you probably have already discussed some of that history in previous Facebook Lives, but, um, I say all that to kind of say how, you know, I realized that at that time, there were seven board members. All of them were white. Um, all of them were men except one white woman. And, you know, the decision to implement the plan that way, I, you know, certainly was pretty inequitable um, from what we understood and learned from the community. And so I thought to myself, what would it have been like, or what would that have decision? Would, would there have been a different type of decision had there been more representation? Had the, uh, the school board looked more like the community it was serving? Um, and if they had, you know, really taken into account issues of equity, um, more deeply. And so, it, it, you know, really was kind of the trajectory into what are school boards today, you know? Do they play a role in policy? Do they not? You know, what is, what is their role in, in terms of equity? So I'll stop there, Camila and Lee.
That was good. Oh, no, that was really good. And you know, you, um, and of course, th- thank you to those really quick who are on the Facebook Live. I want to do a shout out to our, our friends on Facebook. My cousin Belisha, hey, I'm so glad you're on. We have a friend from, um, Africa, Nigeria, who's on. Hey, adieu. And for those of you who are watching and kind of just watching and not participating, that's cool, but we want to say hi to you as well. Um, and please feel free, if you have questions or anything to please ask, and take notes, you know? Use this opportunity to just fill yourself with more knowledge so you can decide what you would like to learn more about. But, um, you, you actually, um, during my campaign experience, um, how you're talking about equity, I remember I had a picture of myself, and I had a black shirt on. I, I had a, a shirt on that said to, what was it? It was basically celebrate black colleges. And someone took that, a highlight of my, took like a screenshot of my photo and spread it around and was like, well, you know who she's for. And I was thinking, I was like, are you kidding me? And I really just think this conversation around equity, um, racism is so important because there's this, um, I'm just, it immediately says what it is, white fragility. That I can't even, it, there's this feeling of, you know, s- some members in society want me not to acknowledge my blackness. And I got that a lot on the campaign trail. It was, you know, you shouldn't say this, you shouldn't do this. You live in Summerlin, you know, be, you can't be too authentic. You can't, I'm like, well, well, who am I going to be fake? And then you're going to be mad when I'm fake. But when you talked about equity, that just kind of reminded me of, um, the, the importance of having representation on the school board because just even in conversations, when I'm in conversations with, um, when I'm in conversations at a table, I, sometimes I don't hear every community being represented because the people speaking are not thinking outside of their own lens.
Exactly.
And this is so important. Um, Darlene, did you have a question?
Well, I did. I wanted to talk about the disproportionality because Title I and, and the word at risk, how they changed the definition of at risk during their funding process, when they were the people-centered funding people, they really just changed the definition and, 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 uh, special education was awarded, but to an extreme amount. They went so high that they can't lower that amount for certain schools that they awarded the special ed dollars to. And it's just frustrating because disproportionality is required by law. They have to address the disproportionality for African-American students here in Las Vegas who are not meeting basic standards. And with us at the 40th percentile, or only 7% of our children are reaching the 40th percentile for reading and math, it's concerning because this is mandatory stuff. I mean, people are losing their children behind this because, you know, the district attorney and CPS really does. If you don't have a place to stay, if you don't, I mean, they're removing these children and putting them in foster care. It's a huge conversation for our community, but we have all these people who don't get to talk because they're, they're living everywhere. This has to be a black thing for black people who have so much money and are still paying taxes, especially those cabaret taxes on the strip because it's higher than regular taxes. And I'm just saying, it's our conversation because we've always paid taxes. Now, for the outcomes and the elected officials, yes, they don't want to be standing now just talking for us, but we need to hold them accountable. And the only way we do that is to get them in a room to have that conversation. And I'll lower my hand, and thank you so much for letting me share that.
Thank you, Darlene. So, um, big shout out to Marlene, who's on the Facebook Live, and also Shondrea. She is the education chair for the NAACP, so thank you so much for joining us. And then I saw Regent Perkins join in, so thank you so much for joining us. Um, one thing I would like to talk about a little bit, um, Dr. Sampson, if you could talk a little bit around, um, your interrelated perspective of democracy, community advocacy, and politics? And how you're seeing that, wh- what is your vision or what is it that you have, um? What is your vision and how does that all come together in your work?
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, my, the topic I usually focus is on in my research is school boards, but I've realized through my research and through the findings of what, things I've learned around the research is that school boards don't operate in a vacuum. I mean, they really require community advocacy, especially if you're trying to aim and advance issues of equity. It requires, um, community advocates to be at the table, to be pushing school boards. It requires, um, a level of democratic engagement. So, you know, ensuring that, you know, you have spaces and places for community dialogue, for community, you know, public comments, uh, you know, that are transparent and, you know, that are going to, again, hold school board members, not just school board members, but district leaders, superintendents, et cetera, accountable um, to addressing issues of equity. And then, of course, the political aspect of, um, you know, how, what influences school boards at the local level. I mean, certainly, you know, one of the things I learned about is the, the fact that state politics is so key in what school boards are able and not able to do. And to some extent, federal politics. I would say, you know, both are really important, but I would say state politics probably is even more influential in a lot of ways in allowing or not allowing school boards and school districts to do certain things. And so there's kind of this ecosystem, you know? When I talk about community advocacy, you know, in that piece, I'm talking about families. I'm talking about youth. I'm talking about, you know, community, uh, folks that just live in the community that might not have kids, you know? Um, but still, you know, are paying into a system. I mean, education is a public good. I would say it's our most important public good that we have. Um, and, you know, everybody should be concerned and, and have a buy-in into what our public schools are doing and how they're doing it, and, you know, what the types of experiences, um, our children are having in these, in these spaces.
Absolutely. And, you know, there are some key things that you said, um, that ha- the power that school boards have. And in our work as Levapsey, a lot of our work has been trying to, as community advocates, um, and listening to students and listening to parents, feeling frustrated that their voice is not a part of the conversation, having to come to organizations like Levapsey to say, hey, we need help. We do not have a voice. Um, so we've done our part to, you know, bridge the gap between our, our, our elected officials, specifically in the school board space, to our community and to the students and the families who are experiencing challenges. Um, and that community advocacy piece is so important because that's something that we have actually, you know, we are in. I feel that our community is be, is becoming more engaged because we have not felt as a holistic community that everyone has been able, or, you know, to have a voice, or a voice at the table. And that's why where we are now, we're really in, um, what is the, the moment? We're in a moment where we have new school board members and we have, um, a new superintendent who will be chosen. So we're in a place right now where this decision is so important because we're at this space where we could have a beautiful opportunity to have a school board that may not, you know, we have two Moms for Liberty on our board. Um, we've had some issues with some of our board members not really being community-focused and oriented. You know, they've kind of forgotten that they ask for constituents to vote for them. But anyhow, we're hoping to change some of that to get more, um, community presence. But we're really in like a tipping point to where we have an opportunity to see the Clark County School District move in a totally different, positive, unifying direction if we make the right decisions coming up here. And, you know, for all the work that Levapsey has put into this and just, you know, we've, we've been a part of school boards that could care less about anything that we say. Um, and slowly but surely, we're starting to gain better relationships, more relationships so that we could have of an impactful voice. Um, and, and that really just, you know, because of the power that school boards have, that's why this work is so important. And, um, yeah, I'll just, I'll kind of stop there. But I think, Mr. Rodney, did you have something?
So, uh, when Carrie was, when Dr. Simpson was talking about, Sampson was talking about the, uh,
You can call me Carrie, by the way. It's funny.
Hey, well, you, you earned that, that degree, and I was there when you were working on earning it. So I know, I have an idea of how much effort that you put into it. Just want to be respectful of that effort.
Thank you.
You had mentioned the power of school boards and local politics, but we're living in an environment today where national politics is having an inordinate amount of influence or sway on local politics. I mean, the fact that there's an executive order or, excuse me, a message coming down from the Department of Education, of all things.
Yeah.
Um, sort of almost flipping the script on equity and diversity and saying that it is, it has been white children, and they threw in, uh, Asian children. But white children who have been discriminated against. As a matter of fact, in higher education, they even say that white people deserve reparations because of affirmative action in helping to get black people in college. And then now going out throughout all universities is a paper from the Department of Education saying to cease and desist all diversity, equity, and inclusion programs and education. Almost as if it's subversive and that there may be legal actions taken against schools, or as a minimum, losing their federal funding, which to some, many schools, that's what keep the doors open. So my question is, one, have you noticed that change of influence? And ultimately, how do we as a community and parents move our school board in the direction that we think it should go as times pass, but especially in this new era that we're in?
I knew this was, question was going to come up. Something of the sort.
Right.
Yeah, I think, I mean, I'm in a lot of conversations nationally around this, um, you know, around, you know, with community-based organizations, with national organizations. I just came back from a, a big thing at Harvard where we were, you know, training superintendents about civic leadership. There was 35 superintendents there across the country. And, you know, in the moment of doing the training, we get, you know, dear colleague letters from the federal government talking about, you know, all kinds of the I, oh, I think it was the Title, Title, um, Nine stuff around gender that came through. Um, and I think the consensus, and I agree with this to, um, to, you know, some extent, and well, to a lot of extent, actually, is that school boards are going to be ever more important. Um, local governments, um, the ability of local, you know, coalitions, you know, holding the front line around issues of equity and like the commitment to equity, um, is going to be really important. And of course, states, I mean, school boards operate at the will of a state, at the states, and the states are, you know, responsible for providing education. Federal government, um, you know, that's not really part of the constitution of the federal government. And they can, you know, the threat of withholding federal money is a big deal. However, um, most states don't, I mean, there's not a ton of money that is coming. There's a lot, you know, it can, it can shift a school quite a bit if you don't get Title I funds, for instance, or, um, but, you know, it, it can be also the state's responsibility to come in and, and do more, um, and local communities to do more. There's also, I mean, I, I think about the example of, there are states, um, Arizona and Texas, for instance, during COVID, uh, the governor banned, um, districts' ability to require masks.
Hmm.
And, you know, the threat was, you know, we're going to, we'll take you over, or we'll, you know, like, remove funding if you require, if you have mask mandates. Um, and districts here started to organize together, although, I mean, it's a different situation because there's multiple small districts, but they decided we're going to do it anyways for the safety of our children. So they, you know, um, you know, in some kind of a civil disobedience type of way, um, they organized in several of the more powerful districts, uh, mandated masks anyways. And then they, you know, filed a lawsuit together against the, the governor, um, which, you know, held back the, the line for at least enough time for kids to start to get vaccines and for it to be safer, uh, to not have a mask. for kids to start to get vaccines and for it to be safer uh to not have a max, a mass mandate. But, you know, those are the kind of things that I think districts are gonna have to, and school leaders, uh, uh, school board members, community advocates, community leaders are gonna have to get creative around, like, what can we do together to hold the line on things that we know are important and, and necessary for our kids? Um, and, you know, I think other, you know, uh, higher ed institutions, I mean, here, we're like, folks are trying to navigate that. We, in April, they went through and, and removed all equity language uh at ASU, you know, and, and replaced it with inclusion, was it? No, inclusive excellence. Um, which, you know, I'm like, this, yeah, what does that mean? You know, I don't know. Um, there wasn't even a law. They were trying to be kind of, I guess, proactive in that. Um, you know, so these institutions are navigating in various ways, and I don't know if that's necessarily, you know, maybe it was proactive enough so that now when certain, you know, funding comes after specific language around equity, diversity, maybe inclusive excellence isn't part of that? I don't know. But.
So it's interesting that you say that because one of the things that Dr. Timothy Snyder in his book on tyranny says about that specific issue is that you, we should never try to please
Mm-hmm.
the oppressor by giving him or her what they want.
Mm-hmm.
And definitely, we should not do it in advance. Because when you do it in advance, that is a form of surrender.
Yeah.
And you lose ground. So that's like one of the, the key steps is do not try to anticipate what the oppressor want and then do it in advance because then what else will you do? And how far will you go?
Right, right.
Wow. So in your, your research around school boards, what was your um, what were some of the things that you were looking for or some of the questions that you were pondering um on your um, during your scholarship or research?
Um, my, I mean, I've done a few studies, well, several studies now, actually, um, about school boards. But the first one was really just to what, you know, what are the roles, what is the role of school boards in making policy um and pushing practices around issues of equity? You know, and um, do they, do they, you know, play a role? And if so, what kind of role? Um, I've done other work around school boards and, and meetings, like school board meetings, to what extent issues of equity play out in public comments and the interactions between board members and um folks in the, in the audience and how that plays out. Um, I've done, I just finished a national study on uh school board members across the country who are, who identify as black, indigenous, folks of color, Latinx. Um, and that was a really interesting, because I, I wanted to understand to what extent is representation, racial, racial representation among BIPOC school board members? How does that make a difference on school boards, if at all? And what are their experiences and perspectives? Um, uh, I think that that was really, you know, insightful because it, it is different across the country and in different districts. Um, so, yeah, those are some of the questions that I've had. Uh, like, what, you know, what does it take for school board members to advance equity? And that's really what this book was about, kind of culmination of some of my work um in thinking about what, what is it needed? For school board members, even if it's not a full school board, whether, if it's just individuals, like, sometimes you're the only one on the board who is committed to issues of equity or there's maybe just a couple of you. What can you do? Um, what did you be doing um to, to kind of push? Because, and I say advance equity, and I say that very intentionally because I don't necessarily believe that we will achieve equity. Not in my lifetime, probably not in my children's lifetime. Maybe, you know, my grandchildren's lifetime, I don't know. I hope and hopeful, you know, and I think we can make advances. But, you know, I am also very aware that we live in a system of, you know, inequities and racial gender, all that, that are very powerful. And so um I use the terminology advance as like, okay, what are the little things? I, I see us kind of moving forward um little by little, and sometimes we get pushed back all the way. Yeah, like, I think we're in a moment of pushback.
Exactly.
And I would call that, you know, white fragility, but white rage. I mean, there's.
Yeah. Wow, you know what? The white rage is so real. I've had, listen, people still popping off about me and I'm like, the race is over, y'all. It, we've moved on. But that's very interesting. So in, in the conference, so with our BIPOC um leaders, those who are school board members and those who are running for um school board uh elected roles, have you had any conversations around what their experiences are? How are they feeling in these roles? If they're there, if they're running and, like, what is their future? Like, what are they thinking about all of this?
Um, I, some of them, it was really heavy um to talk about, you know, for them to talk about their experiences and, and share some of the stories they had on the campaign trail, similar to what you talked about. I mean, one woman was talking about how she, you know, was going around, and this was, you know, uh, two thousand twenty, you know, and, and I think that they ran in like two thousand eighteen. So Trump had got elected, it was a first term. And um, you know, in certain neighborhoods, it was very, you know, essentially, I mean, it was dangerous uh to campaign in certain areas. And one black woman who was running, she said this, this white woman put on, or she went to one door, she, this older white woman put on her shoes and said, listen, I'm gonna come with you to the rest of the neighborhood because it's dangerous for you and I want to make sure that you're, you're safe.
Wow.
Neighborhood is not, you know, friendly uh to black folks. And so, um, and there were a lot of folks who would get harassed, death threats. Um, you know, just people who resigned because it was, it was a lot. Um, and, you know, I mean, it really, again, though, depended on the community. There were also other communities that were largely, you know, more progressive and they felt very supported by the community uh to make certain decisions around issues of equity. They felt pushed. Um, and so, you know, it was kind of a, it, it, again, it varied um across the country. Um, ultimately, though, I think, I mean, it's, it's a hard position to be in for anyone. I mean, being a school board member is largely a volunteer position that requires a lot of time, a lot of effort. I mean, in a district like CCSD, I mean, you're talking, even when I did my research, I, I did um a multiple case study, the book is largely centered on that, on CCSD, Clark County, Salt Lake City and Tucson. I mean, I went through, there was hours, like two hundred and something. CCSD by far had the most hours of meetings um that I went through. And, you know, there's just, it's, it's a lot, it's a complicated district. So these like large urban districts um require a lot of school board members. And again, like I said, who, who has the ability to sit on a board um is another question. It's usually not folks of color who come from, you know, low-income, you know, communities or single moms, like, you know, they don't, might, maybe not have the capacity to, to campaign and then to actually maintain a, a position. Um, and so, yeah, this is not a difficult, I mean, this is not an easy position for anybody, but particularly um folks of color in certain communities and certain environments, and especially at this time.
Oh, goodness gracious. Ooh, my family was like, we hate to say this, but we are kind of glad you're not up there right now because they're like, first of all, because you talk too much. I'm like, but that's what we need. But um Darlene, I'm gonna let you, after, after I say my comment. Um, but in, and that's also a part of the work that we've done, like, for those who are interested in running for school board, if you feel that's a part of you, like, really hone in and understand that this is not a committee. This is like a full-time job managing a billion-dollar budget, managing three hundred thousand plus students and like forty thousand plus um uh employees and obviously the main job, the superintendent. And I think that sometimes, just when I'm hearing people say, oh, I want to run for school board, yes, I love it, but really understand what it is that you're getting into because it's a lot of work. You know, you have the community advocates, you have students and families, and there's so much push and pull. And then you also have to think about who you are and who may not like who you are because of how you look and how that plays into um some of the, what is it? Some of the drama that may come up, you know? And I think that's very important, that people really understand, like, the weight of this work. Uh, Darlene?
Oh, it was, um, you know, there are so many biases here in Las Vegas, and it's really difficult to understand, how come we don't have the level of community engagement? Because the conversation is ours. How far we've come since nineteen sixty-four? It's twenty twenty-four, now it's twenty twenty-five. And it's just concerning that we don't have, we haven't had real conversations about the number of children who actually enter into early start because behavior is real. And when I heard someone on the diocese that perhaps they can delay start until nine years old, it was unsettling because at nine years old, life is always going to be about your behavior. But when they have all these intricate details in regards to manifestation, determination hearings, when they move children, they've moved over a hundred and, over a hundred thousand children have moved, been moved in their districts within Clark County. And I'm saying, they're never gonna learn how to communicate effectively, how to get out of that negative situation because that jacket is following them. That's not special education. Special education is built on foundation, but really teaching kids how to communicate is critical, but because we have so much conflict in our local communities, we have to do this work, this is our work. And how we get the contracts to ensure that we're working on our community is the challenge in twenty twenty-five because we understand what our children are doing. We understand why they're not like us. And, and this is our work. So when we look at the data, because we can only operate from the data, when we look at the data, how many, even if we had just huge community meetings where black people all over Las Vegas can come and just look at the data. We have black people now on the board. Now, they don't have any signing power just yet, I don't believe, but they are there to start the conversation. It is our conversation to have, and this is so excellent. I've been, I was hesitant to come for a long time because I try to participate, but my experience in life is different. My youngest, they said, was severely MR, and that meant that he would never participate, but he graduated with a one-on-one A to laptop and above proficiency. And I'm saying, he doesn't need any more English. How did that happen? Because I was there every day and I was just blessed to be there every day. So many parents can't, they can't show up. Their children are being taken. And I met a young lady and she has three children, but she lost her last one because she's homeless. And that, and I'm saying, she's only twenty-four, but she's already, I mean, these policies are so burdensome to young people in our community because they're just not being given the same resources. And that's what we have to have the conversation about. The more you do this, the more people you get in the house to have the conversation with you, the more effective you'll be because it's your charge. And that's what I'm gonna say. So, thank you.
One of the things, can I, can I think, talk a little bit about the data piece? Um, one of the things that I, I, I talk a little bit about in the book, but I'm really trying to kind of push forward as I, in, in, you know, my own thinking and scholarship and, you know, not just as an education professor, but as a parent, seeing what's going on in our schools. And when my kids come home and talk about, like, the, they're inundated with testing. They're inundated with test prep to the point where, you know, uh, last year, my son, they had this March Madness that started in February to do test prep, you know, and get them ready for, you know? And they took away twenty minutes a day from social studies to go over five test questions every day. Um, and just, I, I mean, I could tell when I was talking to the teacher about it, like, it just was sucking the life out of so much, you know? And they were having like incentives, if you did good on the, the test, you, you get to go to the pizza party, and if you come all the days, you get to do it with the principal. And, and then this last year, he was, you know, they were told, oh, you have to do goals. I mean, he's nine. He was in a writing test last year, third grade, when he was eight, for almost six hours with no break. He cannot leave. And it was a literacy test. And yes, I want my kids to read, I want them to, you know, but, but I feel like we need to get more creative about the data.
And the, and that's what it is.
Data beyond just, and metrics beyond just test scores. Like, how do, I see, I'm thinking about Goldie Muhammad's work, um, called Being Genius. And um, this other book called Street Data, where she, they talk about how, you know, test score data is satellite data, and then you have kind of some school level data, it's map data, but really the street data, that what's happening on the ground with our kids and teachers, like, that data is super important.
It is.
Tests don't capture all the genius of our children in particular. I mean.
I mean, but when parents are involved, I'm just saying, when parents are involved, they're in that, they're at the table and they're talking about what's working for them. And I'm saying, engaging with our parents.
As data, you know, like, we can really, you know, our communities, our youth, our, our kids, our teachers should be part of, like, and, you know, developing different types of metrics that.
I'm a hundred percent agreement, I'm just saying, where are we? You and me.
Yeah.
Because this is like the first time I've had an opportunity to meet and talk with you, but just, I mean, you know, certainly because my shy offness, because the invitation has been there. But how do we continue to build support for our families who need to understand that they need to do this level of advocacy? Because no one's gonna do it for them, but if they don't understand that they're entitled, they'll get nothing. And that's where we are. These children are not getting anything. And because everybody gets a free lunch here, there's really no way to identify the services or the line of services. And so are they still running the prime six schools? Most likely, it's still working. But what happened after, you know, the fourth graders lost all of that traction and gain after Tyrone Thompson passed is just too much for me because you're not really establishing the foundational services that everybody's mimicking. Everybody's doing something different.
Yeah.
Does that make sense to me? I mean, because, I mean, you know, Henderson is getting to have a new school, it's gonna have a magnet school. I mean, they're, they're proposing to build more magnet schools. What about these schools that are failing our children and where's our conversation? Because magnet was intended to be created, to be integrated, more integrated space, more. But we have to have the level of parent involvement and parent engagement or community engagement because we're certainly participating at a financial level, meaning finances are going in the educational system to educate our children. But where are we when it comes to their obligation? George Bush said that if the people chose not to show up, that he was not gonna force the states to show up for them. The people in the state had to show up to do the advocacy, then the feds would stand up for them, but not until that happened. So that's why we're here in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, and I think, and what's your, um, oh, okay, I'm sorry, I was looking at something in the chat. And, and, and that's, and that is a part of our work as a community. Um, you know, we have to wake up, stay woke, as they say, or get woke or something because, um, you know, we've been, Tracy and I have said, there was many a times, listen, I went to school board, when I started going to school board meetings, it was like me and a couple people in the room. And then people would criticize me if I was there at twelve AM. They're like, ooh, she out there with her kids? I'm like, yeah, because they're making decisions while you're asleep. And I, and as a community, as parents, even as students, we have to take some of that responsibility for ourselves as well, to say, you know what? I'm going to be a little bit involved in who is making decisions for my children. Because what did Orange Theory just say? He said he loves the uneducated, and there's a reason.
Because you have to understand, we're not enslaved anymore, so we don't need anybody to make our decisions for us. But when we were enslaved, they did make the decisions. We have to make, we have to learn as much as we can learn and have conversations and depend on our neighbors or people who are like-minded to do the self-advocacy. And it really is ensuring that everybody is at the table when we're talking about outcomes because the outcomes are critical. We need to be insured that that happens.
Thank you, Darlene. I, I did have a question really quick. So I, I saw, and we're, listen, our conversation has been so good. Dr. Carrie Sampson, thank you so much for joining us. And thank you so much for the work that you're doing. I think it is so important and valuable, and I'm definitely gonna make sure that we continue to have this conversation, um, definitely around the work that you're doing. And I'm, um, I think I may, I should be able to find some of your articles and provide the link to people to share. But I wanted to see, so, um, there are some boards, you've seen some boards with three board members, all the way up to twenty board members?
Yeah, I'm thinking, Chicago, I think, just had their first elected board, and they added them to the appointed board. So I want to say they have twenty-one members on their board.
Oh, my gosh, I have to go check. Oh, oh, God.
Dr. Sampson, that goes into a question that I put into the chat, is in your research, is there a sort of best practices or formula for how many school board trustees a district should have? Is it X amount of students? You should have this many trustees, X amount of schools, you should have this amount? amount of trustees? Um, is there a best practices formula to determine how many trustees a school board should have? You mentioned seven trustees when you were here in school. Not that long ago, because you're so young and you graduated early and everything. But, um, for those of us who've been around a long time, there were seven trustees sort of at the beginning. And to a certain extent, there is still seven trustees with some non-elected folks that were still working through that. But it's, the population has probably quadrupled since then. I remember when I first came to the state, there was less than a million people, and now we're pushing the three million mark. But we still have seven trustees. Have you come across that best practices or that formula to determine what is an optimum number of trustees?
I haven't, but that is a good question. I think it's one that should be researched. And it's, it's a difficult one to research because, I mean, you look across the country, to what end, you know, are we best, I, like, what's the optimal number, um, to provide the highest student achievement? Or, you know, and then if you, and that's usually the, the thing to, you know, easiest thing to measure by test scores. Uh, which usually that data, when, you know, there's been some research on whether hybrid, um, versus, I mean, appointed versus elected boards are more effective, right? Um, in raising student achievement. And the, the results generally are pretty mixed on that. Um, I, I would assume that's gonna be similar when it comes to the number of board members. At some point, there's a level of inefficiency, I think, if you have way too many. But I can see, you know, and this is just anecdotally and based on like my understanding and, and research around school boards, I can see the need for more school board members in CCSD. I mean, it's such a huge district. Um, and to ensure that, you know, all the communities in the, in the district have representation. Um, and add, you know, substantial representation, I think is important. And so, I, I think it would make sense to have more. I mean, here in, in Arizona, um, it's a state law where it's just, I mean, there's five school board members on every school board, five elected. I mean, and they're, um, elected at large. So instead, you know, as opposed to in CCSD, you're at war at elections. Here, it's, you know, just the full district elects five board members. No matter how big you are, and there's some really small districts here.
So as an example, we have so many schools per trustee that trustees aren't able to go, even if they wanted to, are not able to go and visit each school. And then Darlene often talks about parental and community engagement. It's very difficult for those trustees to have that level of community engagement to help sort of bring the community into the process because they have so many school communities to deal with. So I, and, and so that's part of the reason why I asked the question is if here, we are almost divorced of parental community engagement. There is some, but it's not nearly enough. And there has to be some one or some ones to facilitate that. And in your research, have you found that it is the school board members who play a pivotal role in creating that, uh, community engagement? Is the superintendent, is it the principals, or is it a combination? Who leads that effort?
Yeah, I think it's a combination. I mean, uh, some of the things I found like that work. Um, you know, for instance, I remember when Dr. Young was on, Dr. Linda Young was a board member. I mean, she was really intentional about having community meetings. Um, but she was also, this was like her full-time gig, you know, again, this is a lot. So I think being able to have more board members to be able to do that more, um, or easily, or in a, in a, in a easier fashion. Uh, but district-wide communi- committees are one way of getting the community to come in. Um, one of the things I, I think I talk about in the book was that at the time, CCSD had like an EL advisory committee that included, um, a couple of board members, some district admin and community leaders. You know, community fo- folks from different organizations or, and parents. The PTO, I mean, like, these, and, and I know some districts are trying to get rid of these district-wide committees or advisory groups, and I think that that's a service to, um, to our community. I mean, I think that's one way that, that communities can have a voice.
It's part of the requirements for the funding, for federal dollars, for Title I, to have school advisory committees and for, um, the, uh, the, the one for McKinney Vento requires community engagement too. I think that, you know, the community, the African-American community just has to push for a voice at the table because these are our children. And when we don't stand up against them, they just take, because they're always talking about what we need and how they're providing it. And they have all these national organizations, you know, the Boys and Girls Club, you know, all of them are national and the money does go to these people. But when they're not doing the job in our community, it has helped us to organize and have public meetings, just talking about the data, holding them accountable. They will come, I promise you. If you have it, they will come. And just keep on inviting until you get more and more people in the room because we're all responsible for our own demands, if we don't speak up.
Yeah, Prime Six used to have, and I don't know if they still have an advisory committee, but that was one way. And, um, in my research, I noticed like through, like, Prime Six Advisory Committee, through the EL Advisory Committee, that invited community folks to come in. Those community folks would identify inequities, like, and push the district and the board to do something. Like, those were key in pushing the board. I know SOT, SOT is the school organizational teams are supposed.
To do with local control and the funding.
Yeah, and actually, I've done a little bit of research on those across the, 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 the district. Um, and it varies so much, who has the capacity to do what? I mean, one of the things we learned in one side of, of town, I won't say which side, in Clark County. But that SOT was really powerful in being able to raise all kinds of funding to keep.
Because they were raising the funding and they were keeping it at their school site and they were doing what they wanted to do. And this is what I'm saying, local control is really real. And the flexibility, there is no criminal charges that can be brought against anyone when they're not meeting the needs if we're not speaking up on the needs of our children. And I'm sorry, you know, that's why they're worried about the number of kids who are in foster care, because these foster cares, children are broken because there's no connection. And they're worried about, uh, the early start because they don't have the data and they've not collected the data for early start for three-year-olds that for our children who look like us. We have to hold them accountable for what the federal government says they must do to receive the money. And that's where the conversation is right now.
Yeah, yeah.
The mandatory receipt of the federal dollars goes with, and, and the governor just has all this extra flexibility, you have to understand because he's the last, when the state didn't do it and the state agencies didn't do it, the governor is the last stand. He can try to make something happen to, to make the money fundable to the state.
So as we come down to the last five minutes of the show, uh, Dr. Sampson, first of all, again, thank you so much for being with us today and sharing your research and expertise. And make sure before you leave to tell us the name of your book again, so we can all run out and get it. And, and how we can stay in contact with your research. Uh, but when you mentioned SOT and performance, SOTs can play a role. There are a lot of programs that seem to work really well in communities that are more economically uh, privileged.
Yeah.
In comparison to communities that seem to be on the lower rung of the socioeconomic ladder. And so, then it seems like, yes, a SOT is a good idea. But how do we tailor that concept to communities like many of ours?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, and that's my concern with us. So when we started researching, like, what is the, you know, like, how does this differ across the district, um, these SOTs? Uh, one of the things we found was, yes, some districts have the, or some areas, SOT school organizational teams have the capacity to fundraise in ways that others don't. I mean, they were fundraising, I mean, private dollars that saved, you know, when the school was experiencing a budget cut and they were supposed to slash a couple of teacher lines, they saved enough, or they raised enough funding to keep those teacher, teachers, you know, there. Whereas, I mean, if you're talking about the other community across town, they're not gonna have that capacity. Also, what we found was when we went through a bunch of SOT meetings across the district, some were super active. Um, and others had meetings in two minutes, like it looked like from their meeting minutes. Are they really mean? Are they just, like, is it just the rubber stamp situation where the, and, you know, the elections even too can be held in all kinds of different ways for who gets on the board, uh, SOT. It can either be, you know, you come in in person from three to five, like, who, who's, what parents are able to come in from three to five and vote, you know, or are they creating a really equitable election system so that, you know, we have voices at the table in these teams? So there's just a lot of variety and I would, I would just caution, like, folks who are, you know, I know as SOTs kind of reemerge as part of the governing system, that there's some really kind of concrete, um, oversight around how that happens. Um, in Salt Lake City, they have school councils and every council gets a certain amount of money, like, I think it's like ten thousand dollars. It comes from a lawsuit. But every, they get the same amount of money and they get to decide, like, what kind of things they, you know, do with that money to help with the school.
Well, I, I think that, you know, Title I actually provides training for families within the school district. And I think that it would be a great benefit to find a, a federal trainer, not West Ed. You know, not one of those agencies, but one that would help empower local communities organizing. Because I know that the Office of Civil Rights even has a community advocate that would help to organize. Because we've just had this historical oppression here. And the, and the African-American children are seen as behavioral issues, so few of them. I mean, when you have eighty-seven percent population of Negro children in juvenile facility, it's a problem. Because this is twenty twenty-four, and willful defiance is real. And children have, and when they're moving to put all those children into those schools, uh, for, um, spectrum-related issues, if you don't understand autism and all the, all the support that comes with that, this, the state's obligation, that's why they're moving and separating the Department of Health from the Department of Health and Human Services. And so, things are changing.
We gotta go on because we've gone over five minutes for Dr. Carrie Sampson's time. So we want to thank you so much again for joining us and we please, um, please support. And, um, oh, one, my last thing, um, that I'm not gonna ask, I'll just save it for later. Because we'll keep going. Um, but thank you so much for joining us. We got a wealth of information. I'll make sure that I share out Dr. Carrie Sampson's book, so you can purchase it and read more about her research. We hope you have a wonderful, wonderful evening and we'll see you next Tuesday. Next Tuesday, we are gonna talk about Kendrick Lamar and what, um, we're gonna talk about Kendrick Lamar and his performance on the NFL stage. So we hope to have you a part of that conversation. You all have a wonderful, wonderful Tuesday. Bye-bye.